Okay, good evening. This is the Rattletown Planning Commission and it's May 9th, 2024. Welcome everyone and let's begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approval on the agenda.
Move to approve? Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we're down to public comment. We have a special guest.
Well, let me just say thank you to all of you for being on the planning commission and working hard. And when the select board tosses yet another chore to you, taking it without complaining, although you might be complaining, but you don't complain to us. So we appreciate that.
When you got that right.
We know we've done that to you. And you know, if there's anything on your minds that we can do on the select board to help you out or make your life easier, let us know. We might even do it. But again, thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, so I guess the last thing we brought to you was regarding the housing and maybe looking for some grant money. Where do you think, there wasn't much discussion when I brought that up. Where do you think that stands?
So we should put it back on our agenda, it sounds like, and remind everyone that we have some thoughts. And we are, we have invited to the next select board meeting, which is, what is it, the 27th?
First.
Okay, I can't see it too well from here. We've invited the folks from the Cortina and the folks from DCF and the Agency of Human Services to come talk to us about long-term plans that the state may have for housing the homeless here. We've, we've heard rumors that the state was down looking at different sites in the city and the town. It was the city folks who tipped us off because the state didn't call us up and say, take us around, please. So we only know about it because, you know, second and third-hand information. So we want to know directly what the longer-term plans are and then we can start, I don't know, trying to get on top of things. We had the Joe Anthony from the mall in and they are, you know, we heard the usual, they were getting ready imminently to sign a lease for someone to move in to the mall. And he was going to let us know in just a very short period of time. But he has also mentioned, perhaps because we've asked him directly, he has also mentioned that it is possible to put a housing component at the Old Diamond Run Mall. And I think on the housing survey that the planning commission did, the regional commission did, that was the one place
Far and away.
All the time as a place for possible housing. So the townspeople know it's there and they're, they're keeping an eye on the place and we're trying to find out a little more information. I did remind him that because this, you know, there's an Act 250 permit on the whole mall area, that anything they would do that would deviate from what they have now is going to have to go through Act 250. And the town, the select board and the planning commission both are statutory parties in any Act 250 proceeding. So if anything starts happening there, then you folks are going to be called in as well as us. And we'll see the plans and we'll be asked to comment.
So I, I had a phone call today from a commercial developer who would not give me details, but was working on what permits they're going to need to line up for that property. And so we had a conversation about who and where and what, but they were very interested in the permitting process for a commercial development. So.
Okay, so that's more than we've had in the past.
Years, yes.
Okay.
Back to the Cortina, was it you that discovered the sewage issue?
Yes, yes.
It's not, not really a laughing matter.
Well, it was just, I happened to be a little early. It was a Friday and I was going over to the fairgrounds for a thing. And I, and I was too early and I couldn't get in. So I thought, well, I'll just go check out the Cortina. There was water bubbling up through the pavement. So I called Bill and he did some calling. I went to my appointment, came back and an hour and a half later, the water had turned into shredded toilet tissue with, you know, water and shredded toilet tissue and an employee there with a hose, hosing all of the effluent into the swale that's there. And so I called Bill again and JP got involved. JP called the state health inspector. And he did come, he came very quickly because my third trip back there, the state health guy arrived and started going like this as soon as he saw the guy with the hose. So there, I don't know what the outcome of that is, but they obviously had problems with their sewer line. We have, as a town now, we're going to have to have that line cleaned out. Because if it's a problem, we got to take care of it. So there, there seems to be a continuation of things associated with the Cortina. And we're trying to keep an eye as best we can.
Is that due Mary to the overabundance of people residing on a constant basis at the Cortina?
I don't know. I mean, when they were, when they were cleaning the place, I think they were finding sheets and towels and.
Toys, toys in the drain.
The drains?
Yeah.
Just, and you had brought suit, I guess, or whatever against them in court. Are you going to follow up on that again, or is it just have seen no, no particular benefit there?
What you have, what we have right now is a little bit of a stalemate. The, the environmental court found that turning the Cortina into a homeless shelter was a change in use. So we were right. And the district commissioner who said, you need to get an amended permit because it's a change in use. That part was correct, but the judge also said it's moot because the program's going away. The program didn't go away. Okay. So we did, when we renegotiated the, we call it a settlement agreement. We put in a few things that we hadn't the first time. One is an escalator clause. So every six months, the Cortina has to pay more, a 5% increase. So we're now on the first increase amount and they are paying. We also put things in there about, you, you have to provide play places indoors and out for the children because we know there are kids there. You have to provide meeting areas so that when social service people go down there, they have a place to meet with the clients. You have to do criminal background checks on the motel staff because there are children there. And there were a couple of other things that we put in. And we said, this agreement will cover any voucher program and any, any homeless housing thing. Not any one particular one, but any. And this runs with the land. This agreement runs with the land. So if Cortina sells it, the present group sells it to somebody else, it's part of the 250 permit and it runs with the land. So, I mean, we're, in a way, you know, we're, we're kind of stuck. And that's why we're having the state people come down and tell us what they want to do and what the long-term. And we told, when, when Matt Eddy and I negotiated with Dhruv Kumar and Anil Sajdev, we said, we want the Cortina Conference Center back. That's what we want. The, we need motels and we need a place where we can meet, you know, for social events and weddings and all of those things. We want it back. I don't know if that made an impression on them or not, but we'll see. I think Dana had a question.
Yeah, Mary, from a jurisprudence perspective, since the ruling by the judge was that the program was sunsetting, what recourse is there to revisit that decision?
We could if we wanted to, but we also sort of anticipated it may not. And that's why we put the escalator clause in. So the monthly payments from the Cortina to the town are 20, started at $22,500.
Right.
Now there's an increase and in six more months, there will be another increase. We're putting economic pressure on, hoping that it's some, and you'll notice that the amount paid per person being housed has, has decreased from, I think it was like 137. It's now down to $80 per night.
So we're thinking the economic pressure may cause the thing to go away, but maybe not.
And we could go back and we could say, okay, this thing hasn't ended. The judge's ruling, you know, that it was mute, hasn't appeared to be, and we moot, sorry, not mute.
Yep.
And it's time now to go get the permit. We haven't, we could, we haven't done it yet.
Seems like there could be additional violations of the permit.
Sure does.
So that, that incremental every six months, is that based on there being a homeless shelter? I mean, what's the?
Any kind. And there's, we don't care how many rooms are, are used. It's a flat fee. So even if they decrease the numbers in there, we still get the flat fee.
So at what, what point, I mean, is there some definition of when it's not, if there are two? Take an example, I mean, extreme example.
There are two people left?
Yeah.
I would expect, we didn't put anything like that in, so I would expect that we would be paid for the month if those two people were still here. I also expect they would come talk to us, but they're not in that position yet.
The fire?
Yes.
There's some outstanding violations that we don't know have been taken care of yet from the fire safety?
Um, yes, John Paul reported as health officer and.
In the state fire marshal?
Yeah, this is, I should warn you, you may get another ordinance, sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask my next question.
We were going to ease into that, weren't we? Okay.
No, we're, we're good. We're good. We can, we can handle it.
Bill's not too excited.
Right now, John Paul is our local health officer. However, he, his jurisdiction is really through the state. And so he's, he doesn't have much enforcement. If he sees a violation, he reports to the state person for health and safety and fire marshal's office. And he can't really bring any action. The state has to do it. I think after the sewer leak and the state guy showing up, that was, you know, some indication it might happen. However, if the town adopts our own ordinance for health and safety, especially health, we can then have John Paul enforce it locally. So we're, we asked him to bring in an ordinance from another town that we could use as a model. I think he brought in from, one from the League of Cities and Towns.
The current state one.
Okay.
Division for our safeties. Yep.
Okay, so Bill sent it up to our town attorney to start working on it and see where. So we actually didn't send it immediately to you, which was really nice of us, don't you think?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So there could be a health and safety ordinance. I don't know. Do you folks want to put hands or eyes on it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'm just grateful that somebody else is doing the groundwork and then we can take a look at it.
Send, share it with the planning commission if you would.
Critique it afterwards.
And then we'll take it from there and it will be up to the select board if we want to adopt it. And we'll take your advice on, you know, whether we should and whether it's, and we'll take JP's advice, of course, because he would be the official who would be enforcing it. So that hasn't happened. It's in the works. And once our attorney goes through it, we'll have to debate on what we want to do about it.
And what do you expect to come out of the meeting on the 21st with the state officials? The different, if you got family and children, the division of family and children, you got health.
I think we want, I, we, from my point of view, we want the state to know there are any issues. We want the state to, trying to think of a tactful way of putting it, smarten up when they do these contracts. For example, I, I was a foster parent for, and this is the example I use. I was a foster parent for a number of years. Our home was inspected. We had to meet certain codes all the time in order to have one or two or three kids in our house. I'm not sure how many children are housed down at the Cortina, but it's way more than that. And I just would like to see the state be consistent about protecting the children who are housed there as much as they are, you know, make foster parents and other facilities that house children. I think they should be held to the same standard. I don't think they are. That's, and that's, that's my thing, but for some kind of facility in this area, particularly in our town, they should be talking with us. And we should have input because frankly, there are better locations for a homeless housing shelter. And there certainly are better models, like the Woodstock Avenue rehousing, transitional housing thing. Much better examples that can be followed. So that's the message I think we want to convey. That's, that's kind of my part. Who knows what other members of the select board might want to say. And if you have thoughts, I'd invite you folks to come too and maybe.
That's during the regular select board meeting?
Regular select board meeting, yeah.
It's like the town of Mendon has got some concerns now after seeing what happened here. And they got the same players up there, working with the hotels and motels and things.
Because I've been in touch, I, I happen to know the chair of the Mendon Planning Commission. So we, we had a long conversation.
Yeah, and the person that, that bought the, what is it, whatever they all.
Econo Lodge?
The Econo Lodge. Wasn't he the first owner of the Cortina when the voucher system?
He was the previous owner, definitely.
Anil, yeah. And he has several places around the state.
Around the state.
Yeah.
Right, and none of them run very well.
They're not in my town except for this one. So, yeah. So that's what I know.
When did, when did this sewer event take place? I mean, last two weeks or?
Oh, yeah. Um, it was, I think last, was it last Friday? I think that's right.
I think it was.
Yeah.
I think that's what you said.
Our sewer drain contractor there last Friday cleaning.
All day?
Probably.
Where, where on the property was this? Whereabouts?
Right in front of the entrance, the front entrance. Yeah, it was like.
The front door?
It was like a little, you know, impavement, little fountain until I realized later what it was. It wasn't, I mean, it wasn't right in front, it was, it was in the drive area as you were going, you know. And so I drove around and parked and watched.
And is there a date for Mr. Anthony to come back on for Diamond Run? Is, is Mr. Anthony?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had said like August, I think is what he was saying.
Everything's imminent.
Yeah, we'll see.
He, he did call me later that week to ask some questions. And I've had other calls from people, not him, about the property. So that's more than we've had in a long time.
Not related to his, him and his business?
That's related to that project, to a project.
On that property?
Yeah.
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 And, and he might be developing several different projects at the same time?
I, I couldn't, I couldn't twist arms hard enough to get any information out of them, so.
Well, my, my friends in the city say that they have seen sketches, not just for the commercial redevelopment, but there were also some kind of rough sketches of housing that could occur on other, other parts of that. Is it 81 acres?
Yes, yes.
So, but, but they also, my understanding was they were just barely sketches and they weren't really much more than that. I haven't seen them.
Mary, in, in any of your conversations with various agencies, have you ever seen a plan for transitioning folks from the Cortina to more permanent housing? Has there ever been any discussion?
No, the, the, the state does, has not talked with the select board. Now, there's a couple of backdoor discussions and we will get information through some other town employees, but we're not getting direct information from the state. One would think that we would be players, but.
And that's been from the get-go.
Yeah. So we've invited them to come talk to us.
Have they, have they responded favorably?
They are coming.
No, no, I, I know what the date was. You had said that they had been invited. I did not write down in my notes that they actually committed to coming.
I think they have, yeah.
Okay, great.
Bill's been in touch with them.
I was just, I was wondering how far in the process you had gotten because the invitation being issued was one thing.
The dates coordinated, we could have anywhere from two to five people here.
Including the new owner.
Including Drew, yes.
Who is planning to attend?
He did say he was planning to attend, yes.
Maybe I'll show up too.
It will be an interesting evening. Yeah.
Has a school board election been set, date?
Not that I know of. I think they're meeting this coming week. Three of us from the select board went to the school board meeting Monday night. And they did request that we mail out ballots again and do so at the town expense. And the select board agreed with a condition, which was Joe Donardo's condition, which I think is wonderful. And that is, we want the school board to provide some of the person power to fold and stuff the envelopes and mail the ballots out because we can't do it all ourselves. So they are going to discuss that among themselves and let us know.
Who's going to help? Right, they're going to let you know who's going to help.
Yeah, or if they, if they even want to do that.
If they, yeah.
But if they choose not to, then it won't be mailed out, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And they were hoping to turn the election right around by the end of the month, right?
They were initially, now I think they, Monday night's meeting, they were talking more, they have to get a number, obviously. And with things swirling in the legislature and there was something a little more today about the, God, I keep thinking.
The yield, the yield.
Yield, yeah.
Right, there was even discussions about the legislature doing something again with the yield. That has resulted in some less cost to the town already. And they've also got one other thing, admin costs that can be cut because they had some full-time staff that went to part-time. So there were savings of about $35,000 in benefits that they would have otherwise had to pay the full-time persons. And now it's only part-time. So, you know, they've already identified some things, but as far as I know, they don't have a number and they don't have a date. And if any of you want to be ballot stuffers, let us know.
I like your idea.
Joey's, Joey's idea.
Joey's idea.
Yeah.
Tell him he gets thumbs up from me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for letting us grill you.
Well, I do it to you folks all the time. It's only fair to, you know, let you have at me once in a while.
We invited Representative Clifford tonight. I'm not quite sure. They may adjourn tonight. They may adjourn tomorrow. I'm not sure he's going to make it.
Yeah. Yeah.
But they did pass the river corridor legislation, the mandatory river corridor. And it looks veto-proof.
So you folks are going to be working on that for us? Or what is the town's component in that? Mapping?
Well, it, it's going to be 2028 before it's ready to go. There's going to be a two-year public comment period, mostly with municipalities, like how are we going to do this? Especially those without zoning. And yeah, it was one of our discussion items tonight that what should we do? It's going to be 2028 when this goes into effect. And everything that we've been talking about for river corridors will be, you know, the law.
What do we have? So that leaves us with almost.
So that leaves us, okay, so we've got four years. Do we still want to take advantage? Do we still want to go with a river corridor ordinance and take advantage of the ERAF benefits? If we get some flooding, you know? Whatever we, you know, if we do that, whatever any town has, we become moot by 2028.
Well, that was, that was, that was what I was wondering. If it is all being adopted, then what's there? It would be an interim adoption of a river corridor ordinance until the state.
Right.
Act.
Yeah, and we can talk about it in more detail because we have many of the same principles. Just that there would be that ERAF benefit. Whenever there's a disaster, there would be a financial benefit to the town.
Would we be able to continue that afterwards, after this is, takes effect?
Yeah, to be determined, I'm sure. But that was sort of a carrot in the carrot and stick, you know, approach. So that's going away with mandatory river corridor. So it may go away too. Well, thank you.
We could be grandfathered in if we actually take that action, which.
If they allow that, they may not. I don't know what Bill says.
But it may be easier to convince townspeople to, to accept a river corridor if it's going to be put into place anyway.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, right.
You know what I mean?
And you might as well get the benefit. Yeah.
Yeah.
And you get a benefit, a financial benefit. So if it's coming anyway, you might as well be able to be an active participant and choose your own fate as opposed to trying to buck it. But I think that the, I don't want to speak for the whole planning commission, but I think that we were favorably disposed to pursuing that, correct, as a body?
Yeah, I'm not sure it was, it is unanimous yet, but I think that's correct.
Because we were talking about education and we had, what's his name from the?
Kyle.
Kyle, yep. And then the woman who came down and did a presentation, oh, not came down, but was on Zoom.
My name's Sarah Nice.
Sarah, yep. Anyway, those, they, they did a compelling presentation to us that I thought would be valuable for townspeople to hear as well in terms of understanding the purpose behind it. Because with that, it, would be easy for people to understand, at least logically, why it would be something that would be recommended. Anyway, so if you have somebody who comes into your home, does a home inspection before you sell your house, and they say, well, you really should take care of this, then it's a more compelling argument than just trying to do it from, you know, an individual neighbor perspective or whatever. I, I thought they had some compelling arguments, so.
And I guess at the very minimum, we could use our own ordinance as an educational period before this becomes mandatory, just so that people understand it a little bit better when it does come down.
We are having our town-wide celebration and in the past, the planning commission has come to promote. Pocket park one year, I got to move on that, I guess. And so if there's, you know, you want to set up an educational table and talk to townspeople about some of these things, that would be a great opportunity. It's, you haven't got August up yet.
No, I don't. August 24th.
August 24th. It's a Saturday and we'll feed you.
Sherman, you in again this year?
I have to look at the calendar. I'm always busy the last week in August and I know, I think that's after this. I think I'm okay, but.
Last week was, last year was a week earlier, wasn't it?
September 1st is the Sunday.
We were timing it around the DJ. We were timing it around the DJ, so whatever his schedule is.
Well, priorities.
Look at 2025 for the date and get them now.
Yeah, we should.
And that's, that's the the main fireworks display too.
Right, because we're not doing it on the 4th. We're doing it for a townwide celebration. A little different.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just gonna sit and be quiet now.
Okay, well, okay. So we still don't have, we had a new subdivision proposal come in, application filled out. There was an issue with the sketch. It was just a Google map, right?
So Theo followed up after coming here and we telling him what we really needed because he gave us building plans on a, on a map. He sent me five pictures of from Google Maps with highlighted drawings around different, I could not make sense of what it was. So I said, hey, we really need you to come back to the meetings where we talk about this. I will be there. I emailed him to say, hey, we're meeting like right now, are you coming? And I haven't heard back from him yet, so.
And he started this process like four months ago or something.
According to the listers, the house is under construction.
Okay.
Which is separate from the subdivision, it's on the parcel right now, but it is, they've, they've, they're starting to build the house, it's already under, under construction, so.
Okay, well, we'll revisit it when they're ready. Old Business, the Housing Survey Update, I, I pretty much, we talked about that with Mary. I, we made a motion to suggest that maybe some grant money be looked into. Get more data because the survey was so small.
Yep.
It was like 67 in-town residents filled it out.
So Bill, would you put that on our agenda to, or do we authorize a search for grant money to to enhance the study?
I think, I think the response was you'd be interested to hear if they found any grant opportunities.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, and and we, the M R G P, which we use for the Pocket Park, is is a good source for something like that. They have a housing focus now.
Do you need our authority to go ahead and apply for the grant?
Yeah, you'd be the, yeah.
Okay, so let's see if we can stick that on the agenda.
And it's usually, it used to be September, I think it's moving more toward like the deadline is like November each year.
It's going out farther.
Yeah.
Yeah, one year when we put it in, it was on October and I think I worked on that with you and Mary Beth in a couple of years.
Right.
It was, we had like an October 8th or 10th or something deadline. Now we've got an extra month.
Or two. Yeah, I think. Okay. So it's, I don't see Representative Clifford. Okay, so it's S 213, it's passed both the Senate and the House. The Senate 24 to 4. The House, I think it was 111 to 26, so unless something really strange happens, those should be veto proof. It could apply to 45,000 parcels in Vermont in 2028 when the permitting kicks in. The rationale for it is according to the 2023 National Climate Assessment, the northeastern region of the United States has experienced a 60% increase in more extreme precipitation events since 1958, particularly in inland flooding of valleys where persons, infrastructure and agriculture tend to be concentrated. The 2021 Vermont Climate Assessment highlights that Vermont has seen a 21% increase in annual in average annual precipitation since 1990, 2.4 additional days of heavy precipitation since the 60s. And according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's National Centers for Environmental Information, average annual damages from flooding and flood-related disasters between 1980 and 2023 exceeds $30 million conservatively, must be a national figure. According to the Department of Environmental Conservation, 70 to 80% of all flood-related damages occur within Vermont's river corridors. According to the Department of Environmental Conservation, only 10% of Vermont's municipalities, cities or incorporated villages have adopted full river corridor protection through the department's model bylaws, and that's what we've been talking to Kyle about those bylaws and the model. Promoting existing compact settlements located along Vermont waterways will require improved flood resilience efforts as described in the initial Vermont Climate Action Plan of 2021, such as managing flood and fluvial erosion hazards to protect Vermont's compact settlements, which will be a critical component of a successful climate adaptation response. So the state, as recommended in the initial Vermont Climate Action Plan, should adopt legislation that would authorize the Agency of Natural Resources to revise the Vermont Flood Hazard Area and River Corridor Rule to provide the agency with delegable statewide jurisdiction and permitting authority for new development taking place in mapped river corridors. And then it goes on for a few more pages describing the process, the education, the public comment process, how they'll set up the rule, and so forth. So that's the rationale for what what they passed. What do folks think about just waiting for that to roll out? I think the the public education stuff happens in start, starts happening in 2026, it looks like. Nope, beginning in January 1st, 2025 and ending on January 1st, 2027. The Department of Environmental Conservation shall conduct an education outreach program to consult with and collect input from municipalities, environmental justice-focused populations, the Environmental Justice Advisory Council, businesses, property owners, farmers and other members of the public. Andy.
What did I just?
So the W redoing.
What do we really gain by moving along ahead?
Going with our own ordinance? We get the the added seven and a half percent back from the state when there's a disaster or or we don't have to send to the state.
Which reduces our burden to what is it, is it 12, reduced to 12.5% or is it reduced to 5.5%? I can't, 5%, what is?
So the feds pick up 75%, the state picks up the other 25. And through different measures, river corridors being one of them, we can, we can bump up what the state will pay for disaster to 17.5.
That's what it is, 17.5, allowing us with 7.5 only left.
Yes.
So it's an extra 5.5% because we're now at 12 or 5% because we're at 12.5%.
Right, this is the only thing we're missing.
25, it's 25% that the state makes up, but that's split 50/50 with the municipalities. By going with this, we pick up an extra 5%. So this only matters till 28.
Well, we don't know, we don't know the answer to that.
Whether the, this, this additional amount from the state will, it most likely will until this fully goes into effect, which is 2028. It most likely had.
Yeah, so. And so the, what's the likelihood of? We got four years, you know, to say, what's the real likelihood of a, what?
Would it even be four years? How long would it take us?
It's implemented, right, from the time of, and what's the statistical odds of disaster like that?
Increasing.
Yes, but.
I'd say three. We're likely to have three more events between now and 2028, that's me. Based on what I've seen in the last few years.
And events, but certainly not, oh, Irene sized events.
And one of the things that's happening more often are a lot of treaties are coming down. They have a new term for it called blowdowns. So the E R A F, that whole ratio of what, how much you get applies to any kind of disaster, federally declared disaster, if it happens in your locale. So that could be an ice storm.
It's not just flooding.
It's not just flooding.
If you can't compare Rutland Town with like Berry, Montpelier area where they just get hammered, really, they get totally destroyed. We, we've been fortunate here with with the damage that that has occurred, it's been quite limited.
Yeah.
But it, it, it could have been worse. The, the city, for example, had major issues with water backing up in the sewer systems. I'm thinking about what happened just the other day with your experience down at Cortina Inn. And that wasn't in a major event, but I'm not a betting person. I don't like to spend any more insurance than is necessary. I see this as a bit of an insurance policy. It's aligned with what the state is doing anyway. We get out ahead of it by providing some education and helping people to understand what we're dealing with. It could have a multi-pronged approach. I mean, we could do some climate education along with you know, our energy plan. There are so many things that converge on doing this and the benefit spreads out that I think the bang for our buck would be greater than the amount of energy and effort that we would put in, particularly if we model any of our language off of the soon-to-be-adopted bill. So I, I'm the type of person who likes to put my energy into something that is going to bear fruit. And if you're talking about even as little as 50,000 on a million dollars, which is by my calculation 5%, then you take that and you multiply it by however many millions of dollars. And I mean, if we just had a million dollars, we'd get an extra 50,000 or we'd have, 50,000 wouldn't have to pay. In my opinion, that's an insurance policy that's worth investing in. And all we would have to do is education and craft some language, which would help people better understand they help people to see that it's not something that is being done to them, but that they have some input on in terms of making informed decisions about what is good practice in their no pun intended. That's, that's my perspective, so anyway.
It's not gonna be popular when it goes into effect. And, you know, can we? Can we address some of that?
Is there gonna be any confusion? You said the state starts its, its presentation of the plan in January of 70.
25.
25, for two years. We will, if if we could get started, it sounds like we would be starting about that time. We would have given people a heads up, here's, here it comes, but we wouldn't have started enforcing it by then.
No, absolutely not.
And, you know, and the way some of those state comment periods go, it's like maybe three locations in a state. They're not gonna go to every municipality, every select board and say, you know.
We had a similar session when, I think, two years again for, God, something that I went to with Byron. Yeah, I, I think it was the runoff, stormwater runoff regulations that came down particularly focused on town roads. So we had, and I think they went to the League of Cities and Towns, the big event there, and they had a session there. So you're right, they don't go to every town by any means, but there's a lot of information out there. So we went to listen mostly to find out what they had done. I'm guessing it's the similar model here.
And what we, we could do is get Kyle back when he's got a better, a good handle on what this, what this means and what, what the regulation means. Is it, you know, is it identical to the models that D E C has already come up with or is it gonna be even worse or, you know? I doubt it's gonna be less.
Yeah, based on what you read, I did, there was some mention of reviewing it or looking at what it is now with the implication that it could change, not that it would by any means.
But they'll redo the mapping. And they've got more precise methods now to do that. So the, the map, I mean, that's it right there. It might change a little bit. Probably not too much since we're mostly in a valley.
Can I ask, I thought we had, don't we have something in effect now? Because I thought we had already passed something that gives us that extra 5%.
No, no, we're missing that, that's, we've done everything but that.
We only did the stormwater, which, I mean, there's some.
We did the Moon Brook Watership, it's only the Moon Brook, and we have a flood hazard.
Right.
Right.
But that doesn't qualify.
But those didn't get us.
The flood hazard ones, we had to do, if we didn't do that, we would miss out on like 25% or something like that. So that's right, isn't that?
Right, right, and, and.
Like 2008.
You know, and and the river corridor and the flood hazards, I mean, they're, they're one in the same in some places of the town. But not all, not all of them.
Well, this is much more focused than the flood hazard. And, I mean, I don't, I don't know. It's common sense, I mean, that's what my dad would say, you know? But sometimes trying to persuade somebody that something is common sense is not as easy as you might think, so I may be wrong. I, I may be thinking that this is a simpler task than it is, but I, I I see this a little bit in terms of of the, the pushback or in terms of the potential disgruntledness.
Pushback was the word I was thinking.
Yeah, that we might get, I don't think, honestly, I don't think that it would be any more intense than what we heard on the, on short, yeah, short-term rentals. Honestly, and we move forward as, as two unanimous groups, the, the planning commission and the, the select board to do that in the interest of the public good. And that wasn't against any individual, and I think that we need to make that clear. This is for the protection of all. And, you know, it's not telling somebody what they can or cannot do. It's placing parameters around what is sound and what isn't. And I, I, I see that as a I, I see that as a good thing from an educational standpoint. I see our role on the planning commission to be an auxiliary to the select board, and that auxiliary is the education wing of the policies and procedures that you so graciously bestow upon us. I mean, you know.
Is that a motion?
Am I making a motion? I'd like, I'd like to hear from other people because I've been the only one talking, so before I make a motion.
So any downside that we're doing, we talked about the advantages. But what's the disadvantage of doing it?
We would be out front of an unpopular issue. That's gonna be, just gonna be unpopular in 2028.
But we're gonna.
We just passed the short-term rental ordinance and it's regulation and people in town tend to resist that.
But, but we're not gonna be, it's gonna be a little different because this is not gonna be our.
Right.
This is gonna be the state.
Right.
Regulations that we are letting people know about. And we're not gonna be enforcing it, the state's gonna enforce it.
Potential. Potential benefit.
If we also then move into just, you know, thinking strategically, adopting a local health ordinance, then we would be back enforcing that as well, so that's another ordinance potentially coming along. All for good reasons. All for good reasons, I mean, no question about it, yeah.
But if it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, absolutely.
I was just going to say, if we could time this so that the state... So that the state will enforce it. Once we've done it, we're not, then we're not, we're just bringing the message to this is not a plan for, that is not the town's plan. This is the state.
Just directional.
Ordinance that's coming out. And we are attempting to get in front, ahead of it so that, so that we're not...
Pre-protective.
Yeah, people have time to do it. And maybe we do it with the, with the, it takes away some of the advantage, but I was going to say, with the state's date also. I don't know, I'm not-
Yeah, I think after the public comment period, they have a year to finish the rulemaking, to fine-tune how the permitting is going to be done and what they're going to be asking of municipalities.
Yeah.
So we may be out ahead a little bit on some of the subject matter.
I don't think the public mood right now is to want the state to be doing too much of anything.
Well, she's, yeah, I mean, just look at what's been passed this session.
Okay.
Energy stuff, Act 250. Development restrictions.
So one of the things that I think we need to keep in mind, the reason that we have ordinances and that that is our responsibility for maintaining order and health and safety in the town is because we do not have zoning. And I think that that could, perhaps should, be something that if people are complaining about regulation, then perhaps we could say, well, you do have choice. Everybody has choice. But we're hearing that you don't want zoning. Our only way to ensure the public's well-being and safety is to implement ordinances that look out for that. And so we're here, sharing with you all of the information that is available and giving you an opportunity to provide input. And it's with that input that we will structure some of these ordinances so that you are directly involved with the crafting of those ordinances. And we invited the people who were vocal about the short-term rental ordinance to provide their feedback. I think they would have to admit that we listened on more than one occasion, and we took things to heart, and we made changes. That is the participatory process. You know, it's not regulation for the sake of regulation. So I don't know who, I mean, there might be some people who want to do regulation for the sake of regulation. I'm not one of them. But-
I don't really see the two things in the same plane, more or less. You know, here we're essentially talking river corridors. We're essentially looking at buying an insurance policy that'll be enforced for no more than two years before the state takes over. And we waste a lot of capital and work time on doing something that may not be particularly popular anyway. And I think right now, with, I mean, the mood of people that I talk to, my neighbors, I mean, everybody is focused on the 15% potential property tax increase.
Yeah.
That's what I hear. I mean, and, you know, I've talked to neighbors and people that I know have never turned down a school budget before. And yet, they have. So, I mean, I realize these things are not directly related, but to a certain degree they are. I just don't see us, why we should really go walking along with this thing. I understand all your points, Dan, and I take them. I mean, there's no question that that stream should be protected, but I really don't see much danger to our streams here, to be honest with you. I mean, we don't have really the flood plans and the many things in the way of a, of a major flood.
Center Rutlands-
Really occurred.
Center Rutlands could take a beating despite looking at that map, but-
When we had the flooding event that walloped the northern part of the state, we had, Bill probably told you this. We had one resident over here that was evacuated and put in the fire station for overnight because the water was right up to her doorstep, but it didn't go in. So you're right about Center Rutland being, you know, whatever. Down on Creek Road, I expected to flood. I mean, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
I agree. But that's a good example, Mary, of how we could help people to understand when people don't build in those river corridors, their property is protected.
Yeah.
There's still flooding. It just doesn't impact people's lives.
Well, it did whack our farmers.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Understandable about that.
Okay.
But it wasn't a house, and it wasn't, you know, all of the possessions that go into a home, so, yeah.
So I correct my last thing. There is not significant property damage and does not displace individuals, which is more traumatic, well, maybe I shouldn't even say that, is a different type of trauma than a destruction of crops. And there are measures for compensating for crop and economic loss, if I'm not mistaken.
There is.
And it's easy, that's an economic driver. And if you have a solution to that economic impact, it makes it easier. It's not, it's not complete, but it makes it easier to recover from that than it is to displace a home, potentially remove it, build another one, and displace a family for months at a time, if not years.
Oh, I'm, my, my day job came into play when, right after the floods in Berry and Montpelier because we quickly set up a legal services project for quick legal advice to folks who had then flooded out. And we worked with FEMA and I learned a lot about it. And I saw the types of things that people were asking, you know, what rights do I have? And the neighbor's property, you know, stuff came on my property. Will the neighbor clean it up? And will FEMA repair the bridge to my house? And there was huge impact. So you don't have to convince me of the importance. But it was, it was bad up north. And we were so lucky here that we didn't get it.
And I think it was, it was a matter of luck than anything else.
That's about right, yeah.
That I was surprised that when all was said and done, our area was impacted very little compared to many other areas, including down in the Bennett-
But don't forget Ludlow. I mean, it wasn't far away.
No, no, right. I'm just saying that here-
And Middlebury, there were some.
Yes, there were, right. I know folks that were significantly impacted. So we here in Rutland Town, that's what I meant, "we," I didn't mean our general region, but our town, was, we dodged a bullet that was just by sheer luck, I think. And that's why I said earlier that my guess is that in a four-year, five-year period, we could have three events that could impact us more significantly. What would that be in terms of cost and dollars? I don't know. It could also be an opportunity to advocate for people coming together as a community to support each other in the knowledge of this and in the resources that could be brought to bear, as well as in the planning and organization. Because I know, or have a distinct impression that if another incident happened here, people would pull together like we did during Irene. This just helps us grab a little more leverage for the repairs and the recovery. And for me, that's worth the price of admission. And, you know, I, but, that's-
So I ask again, is, do we need an interim step? Do we need to maybe get Kyle or somebody here to tell us more about 213?
I would like to hear more about it. I'm not, it's not comfortable making a decision to do this now.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear more. It'd be nice if he could help us with some of the answers and some, at least his guess, that's what may change going forward.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Okay.
Oh, I don't have a motion. Even with the major flooding, Otter Creek was, was major. That was right at the top of the ladder, too. But yet, it did a little limited damage. I mean, it did some stuff along-
It was really close. I mean, the flood, it was really close to flood stage, right?
Well, it was flood stage, all right, and, uh... But still, even as bad as it's been, it's limited to who gets affected by, I mean... Along the highway here, those properties. Again, we've been very fortunate. There's not, there's not that many properties that are going to get, that can get damaged. Certainly like when you compare it to other towns and cities that we've been with.
And I think, Howard, to your point, that right now, we might be lucky because we don't have a lot of buildup in the river corridors. This is just to say, these exist. We're placing these guidelines in place so that you don't inadvertently place yourself at risk. So do whatever you want. Just here are the guidelines, here are the river corridors. And if you're going to build, build outside of them.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, that's the common sense component of it, but...
Okay, well-
I think we're good for now.
I'll get in touch with Kyle.
Yep.
And maybe still try to get Paul Clifford in.
That would be great.
He sits on the Environmental Committee, Energy and Environmental Committee. So they took a deep dive into this before it passed.
Little sewer plant we have down here. We've been working with FEMA for, ever since the start of it. We're finally getting to the end of it, but it was a lot involved. A lot, and in the end, we're probably going to get less than $5,000. But the damage that it did, it didn't, it was just some equipment that we had, the driveway and some things, but, uh... At FEMA, it really involved, but there's so many levels to that. And the people that you deal with, and then with them and the state, the insurance people, and, oh my God, it was, it's been a real exercise. And finally, we're closing the door, and we think we're going to put it to bed. But all in all, we're going to get, it's less than $5,000. It's, but it's-
How much was the damage worth? Or how much they're doing property damage?
It was like... Under $10,000.
Under $10,000?
Yeah, under $10,000.
So they paid half.
To equipment mostly, or...
Yeah, well, some of the issues were, it messed up our pumping, our equipment that kept messing up our pumps and plugging. So we had to keep getting A1 down there to clean things out. Our propane tank that we had down there floated away. But, and then, so that's kind of, you know, we're no longer putting that there because that's got to be at least two feet above the flood stage. So that is gone. The driveway was about a $5,000 issue that Fabian's going to start working on now. But we lost a lot more. We were lucky. There wasn't that much down there. But the exercise that we went through, the meetings that we've had, sitting down with the FEMA people, meeting after meeting, phone conferences. I mean, it's been a dozen or more things that have gone on.
You don't want a disaster.
And they keep telling us, saying, you're very small, your damages are very small. And they're dealing with all kinds of things, of course, with huge things. But they treat, no matter how small or how big it is, they treat you the same way. And you've just got to go through all the exercise.
And all the same hoops.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Okay, good discussion.
Thanks.
We're ready to move on. We just have one other thing tonight, the minutes from April 18th, unless there's any announcements.
Move to approve April minutes for April 18th.
Is there a second?
One second.
Did Norm send any, any notes in, emails to anyone? I didn't- He's our editor, extraordinary. Any discussion? Ready for the vote? Or is people still reading?
No, I'm good.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Welcome back, Andy.
Thank you. So, Mary, just a quick, quick check because we do have to do this now. So Howard was there, and Sherman was there. Andy, you were there. Why are you abstaining?
I was, I only monitored.
Right.
It was when we had problems.
I gave my, I gave my vote to-
Right, however, the fact that he was in attendance means that he can verify that these minutes have accurately-
Then I'll vote then.
Probably have a point there.
You know me on procedure, Barbara.
That's right, I was still an Alton, really.
Yep, you were an Alton.
Yeah.
Because, yep. So Barbara, you were there, and I was there. So one, two, three, four. All five of us were present at the meeting, therefore, all five of us can vote. Legitimately vote, but we only need four in order for, at least according to our rules of procedure. We had a quorum, so you're good.
Thank you, okay.
I just had to go through that.
A motion to adjourn.
I move. I'll second that.
Second, okay, we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Thank you very much.